Please stand.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Board members and members of the audience. First item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion on our agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by staying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. First item on our agenda is honors, awards, and recognitions. And I believe at this time, we're going to turn this over to Mr. Walt Shannon. And Walt is going to lead us to this item on our agenda. We have seniors of the month and the governor's awards to schools. Our first recognition is for our senior of the month program. And at this time, we'll recognize Dr. Lois Graham, who will introduce our senior of the month program.
Good evening. A very special highlight of our board meeting is the recognition of the senior of the month from each of the four high schools. Photos and leadership profiles are displayed on the presentation boards in the lobby. Our presentation format provides a snapshot of each senior in their own words of how they view themselves. Their comments are always informative, insightful, and enjoyable. Now, it's my pleasure to present Carl Polly, who will do the first presentation from Prince- he's principal of Auburn High School, followed by Brian Kits, principal of Blacksburg High School, then Dr. Kevin Sears, principal of Christiansburg High School, and Danny Knott, principal of Eastern Montgomery High School. Mr. Polly?
Thank you, Dr. Graham, members of the board, Ms. Blackburn. I would like to introduce you all this evening to Auburn High School's senior of the month for April. It's Annie Blackburn, and she is accompanied this evening by her parents, Anthony and Melody Blackburn, and her younger sister, Sarah, if they would come forward at this time. Tell you a little bit about Annie in her own words. Annie believes that many of her friends would say that she is a very responsible person. She added, "I am fun to be around, and I always have a kind word for everyone. I stay optimistic even when things are hard, and I value my family and friends above everything else." FFA is one of the most meaningful activities that Annie has participated in during her four years of high school. She said, "I have a lot- I had a lot of fun learning about agriculture, and it taught me leadership because I am the secretary of the club." While at Auburn, Annie has learned how to balance her time. She explained, "I have a challenging curriculum along with a job and family responsibilities. I have learned how to be responsible and stay organized." When asked to describe her most unforgettable experience at Auburn High School, Annie said, "The most unforgettable experience I've had during my four years of school is the friends that I have made. I think you can learn a lot and have a lot of things that stick with you, but the most important thing will always be the people you meet." In ten years, Annie sees herself as a Virginia Tech graduate with a degree in natural resources conservation and in education. She hopes to be an agriculture teacher. She added, "My experiences at school will help me reach my goals because I can get into a good college, and my experiences in FFA have helped me make my career decision." Ladies and gentlemen, I again present Annie Blackburn.
Good evening, nice to see you all. I'm proud to introduce Blacksburg High School's senior of the month for April 2013, Ms. Gina Lee. Gina is escorted tonight by Min Zhang. Could you all please come forward? Gina says her friends usually call her smart, kind, caring, responsible, dependable, and trustworthy. The most meaningful activity Gina has engaged in during her four years at Blacksburg High School is being part of the BHS speech and debate team. She says, "I've had the fortune of meeting and learning from wonderful peers and teachers. They have taught me how to present argumentation, write cases, learn from mistakes, control stress, balance life, and always remain positive." During her four years at BHS, Gina believes one of the best attributes she has developed is optimism. She says, "When life gets tough, it is important to remember to stay positive. When I hit my lows, I've had a fantastic group of teachers and friends who always reminded me to smile." Gina says working with the preschoolers for almost two years has been the most unforgettable experience while at BHS. "In my first few weeks, I tried to get to know the kids, but they were still unfamiliar with me. One day, two girls, twins, wordlessly slipped their hands in mine, and together, holding hands, we walked to the buses. That's when I realized I was making a difference." Gina says, "Life has a way of throwing unexpected twists and turns. Wherever I might end up in ten years, I want to look back and see that I have grown and matured, become a better person who had made a positive contribution to our society. I've learned so much at BHS, and the wonderful experiences from here will only help me in the future." Congratulations to Gina Lee for being selected as Blacksburg High School's senior of the month.
Good evening, members of the board. Ms. Blackburn, it is my pleasure to introduce to you Christiansburg High School's senior of the month, Darian Michaela Thornton. At this time, I would ask that Darian and her mother, Tammy Webb, and her younger sister and future CHS senior of the month, Rike and White, join me at the front of the room. In Darian's own words, "My friends would describe me as a maternal figure that puts others before me. Darian is the friend that everyone goes to for advice and support. She's dependable and courteous, but at the same time, a blast to be around. She can always put a smile on your face, no matter the mood. Basketball is the most meaningful and influential activity she has participated in during her high school career. It has pushed her beyond limits even though she didn't know she had. Through basketball and her coaching staff, she has learned leadership skills, perseverance, dedication, and time management. The relationships she built through this program and the lessons she learned will last a lifetime." Cosmetology is a trade that Darian discovered and fell in love with during her time at Christiansburg High School. Taking this class through CHS has enabled her to graduate with a license in cosmetology. Darian owes a big thank you to her teacher, Ms. Ratliff, for preparing her and developing her skills. Her most unforgettable experience in high school was her overtime game-winning buzzer beater this past basketball season. Down by one point against Cave Spring High School, with seven seconds on the clock, Darian's teammates trusted her to win the game, and she came through. In ten years, Darian sees herself as a college graduate with a job she truly enjoys. Still undecided about the path she wants to take, Darian simply wants to end up with a career that doesn't feel like working, but rather a passion. Her high school years have prepared her for the next chapters in her life. Darian Thornton. Ms. Blackburn, Mr. Jones, members of the board, it's my privilege tonight to introduce to you Eastern Montgomery High School's senior of the month, Marilyn Whitaker. Marilyn is accompanied tonight by her mother and father, Ben and Angela Whitaker, and her sister Sydney. If they would come forward, please. These are Marilyn's words. "My friends would characterize me as polite, kind, and willing to help them in any way. I think my friends would also say that I'm a positive person who looks at situations from the glass-as-half-full perspective. My most meaningful experience in high school was being able to participate in journalism classes. This has caused me to be more aware of the things around me and has taught me perspective. I enjoyed being part of my student body through creating school newspapers, and it has given me a sense of connection to my community. Being able to affect those around me through journalism is a big responsibility, and I am thankful that I had that opportunity. I have developed many skills during my four years of high school. I have become a better writer and have enjoyed furthering my skills through art. However, I have not only grown in these ways through my studies, but I have developed new ways of thinking. I have learned the necessity of having an open mind and the importance of looking at situations from every angle. I have learned how to appreciate the differences between people that make them unique, along with building lasting relationships. One specific skill that has become stronger in my life is communication. I enjoy interacting with people more and understand communication is essential in whatever you do. My most unforgettable experience at EMHS was being able to represent my school by attending Girls State this past summer. This experience was such an honor for me. I am grateful to have had the opportunity to meet so many new people and obtain new perspectives. During my time there, I was able to better understand how I can be an effective leader in my school and community, and that knowledge will stay with me throughout my life. I am not really sure what I will be doing in ten years, but my experiences at Eastmont have taught me skills that will benefit me no matter what career I choose. As you go through high school, you become responsible and independent for your actions, and you learn how those actions can affect others. High school has taught me that no matter where I go or what I do, my education does not stop. Throughout my life, I will continue to gain knowledge and encounter new experiences that will shape me into who I will become." Congratulations, Marilyn.
Our next award again, we'll recognize Dr. Lois Graham, who will present our governor's awards to schools.
Good evening, again. It is a pleasure to share with you tonight that three Montgomery County schools earned the 2013 Board of Education Virginia Index of Performance Awards. The VIP incentive program recognizes schools and divisions that exceed minimum state and federal accountability standards and achieve goals established by the governor and the board. This year, I would like for Carol Kaler to come forward, representing Gilbert Linkus Elementary. The school earning the Board of Education Excellence Award is Gilbert Linkus. And we are certainly proud to see Gilbert Linkus in this elite group. Only fifty-one schools and one school division earned the Board of Education Excellence Award. Congratulations, Mrs. Kaler and Gilbert Linkus. The schools being honored for earning the Board of Education Distinguished Achievement Award are Auburn Elementary School, which is being represented by Marcia Settle and Dom Seiya, if they would come forward, and Harding Avenue Elementary School, which is being represented by Megan Marshall. Ninety-eight schools earned the Board of Education Distinguished Achievement Award, and we are certainly proud of Harding and Auburn and their staff for being in this distinguished group. Congratulations.
At this time, the board will take about a five-minute break. It'll give the board members an opportunity to congratulate those who have been recognized tonight, and the board will convene again in five minutes. This public address, this is where the board sets aside thirty minutes for public address with a maximum of three minutes per citizen to address the board on items of educational interest. We do have a lighting system on the podium, and it is green while your time is good, and it turns to yellow when you have thirty seconds left, and then at the end of your time, it turns red. And at this time, we have one person signed up for public address, Barbara Van Dyke. Please step forward and state your name and address.
My name is Barbara Van Dyke. I live at 4397 Fraser Road in Rutherford, Virginia. I am an ISS aide at Blacksburg Middle School and at Shalsville Middle School. I'm here to request that you take into consideration the Obamacare law that goes into effect January 2014. According to the Obamacare law, an employer with over fifty employees and their employees who work over thirty hours a week, who are considered full-time, only has to offer insurance to the employees that is cost-efficient. The insurance only has to be offered, and if the individual does not purchase the insurance, then they are assigned individually ninety-eight dollars the first year, and then it doubles, and then it triples. Many aides have insurance through their husband's work, go to the VA, and already have their own individual plans. We have been told we cannot opt out. I understand it is a given, and we have no choice. I have talked to several Montgomery County officials, and I am told that Obamacare allows local governments and schools to delay this coverage until the start of a next budget date, which for Montgomery County will be July 2014. Therefore, the decisions concerning this do not have to be made now. I also understand that the budget was approved last night by the Board of Supervisors, and tonight, we are to hear the cuts suggested in the school budget. I am mentioning our dilemma before the cuts are suggested, that the aides will be given consideration. We are the little people in Montgomery County school system. The aides work directly with special students and probably know them better than their teachers. I have received emails from several aides who are concerned about what will happen to wages concerning the Obamacare dilemma. Will the health care be of quality that will actually pay for something if we are sick or injured? How much will deductible be? How much will we have to copay for a doctor's visit? I know there is no answer to these questions until you all hear back from Anthem, but please remember, we have not had a raise in four years. When federal taxes went up, they were a part of our salary, and now, a big chunk will go to health care that a lot of us do not need. Those of us that received the incentive have worked with the county for more than five years, and now, everyone will be getting the same benefits as the longtime employees. Will there be compensation for the longtime employees? Increase in wages? A step raise? And how many aides will stay? Please consider our circumstances and realize, most of us have been employed in Montgomery County for four or more years. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes all that have signed up. If there's anyone else in the audience that would like to address the board at this time, if so, please step forward and state your name.
Thank you, Chairman Jones. My name is Connie Froggett. I reside at 1751 Brush Mountain Creek Road, and I am speaking tonight as the president of the Blacksburg High School PTSO, because I'm very concerned about one budget item in particular. For the most part, I support this budget, and I do hope it goes forward as it is. But in reflecting upon what happened yesterday, the anniversary that's occurring today, the thought of safety in particular is very much on my mind. And with that, I'm very concerned about how we are stretching our administrators, particularly in our secondary schools. Last year, we tried a little experiment at Blacksburg High School and Christiansburg High School by eliminating our one AP slash AD position. But what has really happened is we lost an assistant principal, because the athletic director's job is a full-time job. So we now have three assistant principals at Blacksburg High School. And although they have not missed a beat, and if anything, they've probably worked better as a team than I've ever seen anyone work together, we are literally working them to death. I am frequently at the high school now just because of events going on, and I see at least two administrators' cars there until seven o'clock every night. Now, I know they're salaried employees, they're expected to work more than the usual eight hours, but I think this is asking a little too much. And on top of that, they're usually there for a good chunk of the day on Saturdays. Not to mention, they also help cover athletic events when the AD can't be there. I'm particularly concerned about the effect this is having on Blacksburg High School. Given that we are trying to open a new school, we do have a very wonderful sub who comes in when Mr. Kits has to be away, but it's not the same. And it's not that our kids are suffering, because like I said, they are stepping up. It's that they are suffering. And next year, we're going to move into a facility that's nearly three hundred thousand square feet, and it's going to be covered by three assistant principals. That's a hundred thousand square feet per person. I don't think they can cover that. And I think it's going to affect the safety, and it's going to affect the smooth running of our schools, despite the fact that they are doing everything they can to make up the difference. It's just not working. It's a failed experiment. So I'm asking you tonight, I hate to see, you know, yes, we need to have supplies back. Yes, we need buses. And I would hate to see us lose any more teaching positions, but I feel like our secondary schools have really borne the brunt of these cuts, particularly at the administrative level. And I think if you look deep down, there are ways you could perhaps consider restoring these two positions at both Blacksburg High School and Christiansburg High School. And also, please keep the assistant principal positions at our middle schools. Given the cuts coming there, they need to stay as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board at this time? If so, please step forward and state your name and address. Seeing no one, public address is now closed. Next item on our agenda is consent items. Anybody want to pull anything under the consent items for discussion?
Just like to thank Wells Fargo for their generous donation of a thousand dollars to Price's Fork Elementary, and appreciation for the Orphan Ensemble. I guess they must have had some- provided entertainment at one of their meetings. It was very generous.
Anything else? I agree. Hearing none, items approved on consent. The next item on the agenda is the personnel report. Need a motion to approve the personnel report? Any discussion on the personnel report? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll second.
Now, discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by staying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Next item on our agenda is the financial reports. Need a motion to pay the bills?
Someone.
Second.
Any discussion on the bills? All those in favor signify by staying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Next item under financial reports is the approval of the financial summary. Need a motion to approve?
Someone.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by staying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the superintendent's reports, recommendations, and announcements. Ms. Blackburn.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. First item this evening is the recommendation for textbook adoptions for grades three through five science. The information regarding this adoption was provided to you as an information item at your previous meeting. It's presented this evening for your approval. Dr. Gudrow is available if you have specific questions. And I'd certainly like to take the opportunity to thank Patty and the teachers who reviewed the books for their outstanding work in bringing this recommendation to us this evening.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? I have one question. Do they have an online component, or is there a digital component that comes with it as well? Okay.
Is there any way of getting these on eBooks or e-readers or anything like that?
The textbook is available online, so if you have a device that is capable of accessing the internet, then the book is available for students.
So my next question, which is a redundant question, would be, how many students in an average class have a device that could pull that up? And if that were true, and many of them would have that, how many would we have to supply to fill a classroom versus buying a book for every kid?
We don't have that.
I don't expect an answer, but if you care to try, go ahead.
We don't have that data, so I couldn't answer the question.
My point, my point.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But my, yeah, following up with Joe, is there a way that we could find that out and see whether this would help us?
It would only be, it would only be through parent or student self-reporting that we could gain that information as to who has access. And then again, it's very difficult to get the information with a standard included in the response. So we do have some things going on with bring-your-own-device, which allows students to bring their device, and then others in the classroom who may want to do the same activity have an opportunity to use devices that are provided by the school division. We don't have a one-on-one computing initiative, and certainly, that's one of the things that the board has indicated an interest in speaking about at the retreat. So it is on our radar, we just have not been able to identify the funds for doing so.
What that means is that for those students who don't have a computer, we would work toward giving them-
Generally, when you have, when you have a one-on-one initiative, everybody gets one. Even kids who may have them at home, because it sets a standard platform for what the device everyone in a classroom is using. But now, we are doing some things that can be done using a variety of devices, some of which students provide and some of which are from the classroom technology that we have available for them.
This isn't the time to-
Thank you. I think we've got it.
Now, this isn't the time to talk about that, but-
No. All those in favor signify by staying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Yes, I'm opposed. I want to take a path to the 21st century, so I don't want books, I want e-readers.
We got a vote, though, correct? Did you, did you get the vote? Okay, I'm just checking. So our next item is the 2013-2014 budget update. You have the latest at your disposal in front of you and also on your iPads. I apologize, it's a little small for those folks who are seated in the audience.
For those of us seated here, too.
I understand. I'd like to take the opportunity tonight to provide the board a brief update on the status of our budget requests to the Board of Supervisors. As of last evening, the anticipated revenue from the Board of Supervisors was established by the actions of the supervisors at their meeting. First of all, by a vote of four to three, the supervisors approved the two cents per hundred increase in real estate taxes. The proceeds from the increase are designed to go into a reserve fund for future capital needs of the school system. I thought you'd be interested in knowing that there was a great deal of discussion among the supervisors about the desirability of allowing these funds to accumulate over the next five years at a minimum, so as to create a solid financial base for future construction needs. Two cents will generate approximately 1.4 million dollars per year. So the Board of Supervisors couldn't bind future boards, but it was clearly the desire of the sitting board that these funds not be touched, except in the case of an extreme emergency, and be allowed to accumulate. Secondly, by a vote of five to two, the supervisors approved the ten-cent increase in personal property taxes. This was the first increase in tax on personal property since 1993. The increase will generate approximately 500,000 per year, and these proceeds are designed to go to the school division. and these proceeds are designed to go to the school division. In addition, the supervisors directed one point seven million in expected new money to the operating budget of the school division, bringing the new money for Montgomery County Public Schools to two point two million dollars. One point seven from increased revenue expectations, and five hundred thousand dollars from the personal property tax increase. Third, in addition, the Board of Supervisors had quite a bit of discussion about some remaining uncommitted funds in their budget. There were about three hundred and plus thousand dollars that were uncommitted. And from that, the Board of Supervisors ultimately voted five to two to give one hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars of that unencumbered balance to Montgomery County Public Schools for the school board operating fund. The discussion included quite a bit of conversation among the board members that they hoped that the school board would consider this as you deal with the issue of sequestration. So, I appreciate the actions of the Board of Supervisors last evening to provide additional support for Montgomery County Public Schools. They have continued to offset the steady loss of state funds. However, there remains a gap between our needs-based budget and our actual revenue available to the school board for 2013-2014. The gap prior to the addition of the two point million dollars, two point two million dollars, and the hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars from the county, and the seven hundred thousand dollars from the state, was four point two million dollars. With the additional revenue that was approved last night, the gap between the original request and the available funds is one million four hundred and ninety thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars. So that is the number that we're trying to fill. One million four hundred and ninety thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars. So now, if we think we've been working hard, now we really have to start working hard, because we have to come up with a plan to close the gap. You will recall that in January, I gave you a preliminary list of items that I had considered for reduction. And from that list, some of them I recommended, and some of them I didn't recommend. But there was a listing that went up to almost three and a half million dollars in potential reductions, and that is found on the pages before you. So for the remainder, I'm gonna try to simplify it a little bit by bringing your attention to a specific line on the budget handout that you have in front of you. On line two of page one, it's labeled Superintendent's Proposed Budget Request 2013-2014. On line two, the latest information on sequestration from the Department of Education, Virginia Department of Education, indicates that the loss of funds may be closer to five percent than the initially estimated eight point two percent. So for that reason, if you look at line two, you'll see I originally asked us to put three hundred and fifty-two thousand sixty-eight dollars on that line. I've reduced that to two hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars, which is the five percent loss of funds, as opposed to the originally estimated eight point two percent. On line four on page one, this was the item in which we reinstated some of the previous cuts to instructional supplies. If you'll see in the center of the page, I had originally recommended that we restore three hundred thousand dollars to the instructional supplies budget. If you follow that line over to the right, I'm recommending that we reduce that to two hundred thousand dollars restored to the schools, rather than the originally requested three hundred thousand. On line sixteen on page one, this is one-time, well, I missed one, I'm sorry. On line five, the forty-five hundred dollars restored for field trips. I suggest that we remove that restoration of forty-five hundred dollars for field trips from the budget. On line sixteen on page one, which was replace one-time funds for the replacement of aging school buses. I had originally, in the center of the page, budgeted for the replacement of four buses. And if you move to the right, I've cut it in half and recommend that we purchase two buses instead of four. So these are actually things that I had planned to increase, but which, in light of the fact that we have to reduce just over one point four million dollars, I'm recommending that we reduce those expenditures. And that comes to four hundred and sixteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars. And Walt is checking my addition back there, 'cause I'm.
Say that again.
Those changes come to four hundred and sixteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars. That's the change on line two, the change on line four, the change on line five, and the change on line sixteen.
And can I interject here? So on line one, that is an unfunded mandate right there, if I understand correctly. We could consider that, right?
You're talking line two?
I mean, line two.
From the sequestration, that is my recommendation that if we lose five percent of the funds that we use for our neediest kids, that it will make a huge difference in the academic achievement of students. But yes, it is money that will be taken away by the feds that you have an option to replace or not to replace.
And line six, the health insurance.
Don't move ahead. Can I add something to that?
Mm-hmm.
So that's not an estimate, that's the amount?
Based on the most recent data from the Virginia Department of Education, as they followed the feds, this is the number.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and who knows if it's real or not?
Exactly.
So line six on the health insurance due to the Affordable Care Act, that's another unfunded.
That is correct. We had initially put this number on this line because we thought that the existing insurance program for our employees was going to go up potentially by that much. You'll recall that it ended up, it was only gonna go up by point nine percent, and Anthem waived that increase. We've left that number in the budget, because the board will have to deal with the impact of the Obamacare requirements. But yes, it is a requirement for which you have not been provided funds.
And that is the same thing from line seven with the VRS. That's another state mandate that's coming down, and we have to start supporting the insurance.
This budget includes restoring the remaining four percent of the five percent shift in VRS funds from the employer to the employee, and the money was not provided by the state for doing so.
And then on line eight, the salary, two percent salary increase is kind of a bit of arm twisting, again, by the state, that if we don't accept the SOQ-funded positions funding, then this number here would, we would be given a raise to everyone, correct?
That's, that's correct. The state gave us approx, just over four hundred thousand dollars for the two percent raises for employees, but to give all of our employees a two percent raise requires one point six to five million dollars.
So if my math is correct, it's about two point two million dollars of unfunded
These, these.
mandates that we have to do, or it would be difficult not to do.
That is correct.
Okay.
So again, just to recap, my recommendations in that segment of the budget are on lines two, four, five, and sixteen. And they're basically not making purchases that we had planned to make. Moving on now to page two. On line one of page two, this is the exact same information that I gave you back on January twenty-second. The chart is identical to the chart that you saw on January twenty-second. So I've reduced four hundred and sixteen thousand plus dollars on page one, and now I'm gonna look at page two. Tonight, I'm gonna provide you with my recommendations based on the real definition of the gap. And on page two, line one, there was a leadership change, which resulted in our Director of Special Education moving to point six, I mean, point eight of a FTE instead of one point oh. And that saves us about fifty-three thousand dollars. That's one reduction that I recommend on line one.
You're saying that the Director of Special Ed would be moved to?
She has been working a point eight position since March one, which was approved by the board at that time.
And now it will go whole, or?
No, it will remain at point eight for the thirteen-fourteen school year. It's a savings of about fifty-three thousand dollars, because we no longer pay VRS, nor do we pay one point oh salary, we pay point eight. Number two is the summer academy change. We'd initially looked at totally eliminating it and putting that responsibility back on the individual high schools, but because of the fact that we're gonna have two high schools that are pretty overburdened this summer, and will have a very difficult time, I believe, running their own summer school program, I'm recommending that we reduce that cut to twenty-five thousand dollars and do a centralized summer program, again, at Christiansburg Middle School for one more year. On line, and that's line two. On line four, this was the line about supplemental positions. I had originally looked at up to a hundred and nine thousand dollars in savings for supplemental positions, and I know the board has very strong feelings about taking money away from people who have grown accustomed to having it. However, as much as I have looked at this, I have a very hard time justifying providing our school nurses with twenty days of work when students are not present. I consider it a nice-to-have, but not required for providing the necessary health services and records review that we need for our students. It's something that was added when you had available resources to do it. So I'm recommending that we move the nurses from a two-hundred-day contract to a one-hundred-and-ninety-day contract, and it saves twenty-eight thousand dollars. And I'm recommending that every other supplemented position be reviewed when it becomes vacant for a potential opportunity to reduce the extended days that are in that contract. The nurse group is so small, that I think it would take you a long time to be able to adjust that contract year. And it is, it is really a nice-to-have, and not a mandatory requirement for the school district. In fact, a hundred and ninety days is not even mandated. A hundred and eighty days is your student day, and that's when you most need your nurse services. So that's my recommendation on line four. Skipping down to line eight, I started out with this line when we were looking for four point two million dollars, or three and a half million dollars, or one of those bigger numbers. We looked at increasing class size by point five FTE in grades K through twelve, and I have changed that based on the current budget to reducing one FTE from elementary grades three through five. We've looked at the projected class size for next year. We believe we can do this without a great deal of difficulty. It saves sixty thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars. The big one is the change that we made in the middle school scheduling model, and it has provided, although we initially estimated nineteen point seventy-one positions, the schools have actually worked the schedule now. It's been reviewed. We know what they can do with that, and combine, and collapse, and what they can't. And it is closer to fifteen point oh units, but it saves you nine hundred and six thousand six hundred dollars. And that's my final recommendation, for a total of one million seventy-three dollars, two hundred, seventy-three thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars on page two, and four hundred and sixteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars on page one, which fills the gap of one million four hundred and ninety thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars. So this evening, I offer you these recommendations for your consideration and your discussion either this evening or at your board workshop on April twenty-fifth, which begins at seven P.M. If the board desires pricing information for other recommendations that are not included on my sheet, I need that feedback from you, so that I can be prepared to provide you with that information on April twenty-fifth.
Board members, comments, questions on the budget as presented by the superintendent?
I do have a question about item nine, where we were modifying the middle school class schedule. We actually had a vote on that in a previous meeting. So why would this be included in here, it's like we're voting on it again, kinda thing?
It's, it's not really, I just had to show a way to balance the budget that was initially created. And this is where nine hundred thousand came from. I mean, I could add it, I could take it away on the expenditures side. But since we started it this way, it appeared easier to continue it this way.
And I just need clarification on the proposed budget request number nine, restoring the two vacant maintenance positions for the new schools. Is that because they're larger schools?
Yes, and they were vacant, and we didn't fill them when we moved them into Blacksburg Middle School, and when we, Auburn High School. So these are like the building engineers who run the sophisticated systems that are in those new buildings. And they are already budgeted positions. We took them last year as a one-year-only cut. Those schools, those new schools could not run without these maintenance positions.
Is it because they are larger schools?
They're larger and much more complex, the systems in those schools.
The systems.
Like HVAC, electrical, plumbing, all of those things.
On page two, item three, and reducing the days for the nurses. Remember how we struggled, Mr. Jones, to get nurses in each one of those buildings? So I would like to see exactly what they do with those extra twenty hours that you're talking about.
It's twenty days.
Twenty days, I'm sorry. Twenty days. You know, you know, I hear what you're saying, when the children are there, but there are also, I'm sure, tasks that need to be taken care of, you know.
They do our health records, but I'd be glad to help you with that, and to provide you with some additional information. But even with the reduction of ten days, they have ten days in which students are not there, that they could do those medical records issues as well.
I'd just like to see some data on that.
But I will provide you additional information.
Has your text two hundred to one ninety? So we reduced them ten days or twenty?
Ten days.
Okay.
They have a two-hundred-day contract. There's a hundred and eighty student days. The reduction allows them ten non-working days, ten non-student days, that they're in the buildings.
And I guess the record-keeping that I would be interested in, is this mandated record-keeping?
Kinder, it's kindergarten, all the shop records and that kinda stuff that we have to look at, that's one of the biggest, biggest pieces.
Okay.
But we also have a year-round, twelve-month coordinator who can assist us in that role as well, if there happens to be some additional work that is not being able to be covered by the school nurses at the school sites. I mean, they're critical. The nurses are, you know, I don't want a school without a nurse in the current day and age. But I also understand that the majority of the work that our nurses do is directly with students, you know, and there are some issues. They go on field trips and some things like that, so their day might be longer than the standard student day occasionally. But there are twenty days there. Twenty times eight is, you know, a lot of hours. So I made it with, after great. So I made it with, after great thought.
Well, Board members, you know what one of my feelings are, and that's on the capital. I mean, I, I do not believe that capital, maintenance of our buildings and buying buses, and, you know, I, I can see a bit of a gray with the twentieth-century classroom, but fu, trying to, to fund things out of a capital stuff, out of a operational budget is just not good. And we've got to get away from that. And I've said that several budget years that we need a, a separate budget for capital and a separate budget for operational instead of trying to roll the two together because there's a number of things that we could, and it may be just simply creating different spreadsheets, but I'm just opposed to having a capital rolled into this operational part of our budget.
You'll recall that last year, the county manager recommended that the three items that are on lines fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen be funded from one-time money. It was, and that was the only time since I've been here that that kind of recommendation was made. But he recommended it as part of his budget recommendation last year. This year, the county manager nor the Board of Supervisors have dealt with the one-time money that will be generated in June. It's from the two-cent increase. So my understanding is that they will be talking about that. So certainly, this Board would have an opportunity to draft a request to the supervisors asking that they fund these items from one-time money or some of these items from one-time money and allow you then to restore that money to your budget. But for right now, you don't have access to that money. So I would not, if I couldn't get the money from the supervisors, from their one-time money, I would not want to sacrifice the roofing plan. I just wouldn't.
And we won't know about that till June?
Pardon?
We won't know about that till June from them.
Um, they did not deal with it, nor did they set a window that they planned to talk about it at last evening's me, meeting, although it was mentioned that they would be talking about it in the future.
I think we should make a request.
Thank you, that's what I was gonna be suggesting.
I mean, I think that we need to send a letter across the hall and, and say that we would like for them to consider that again next, as they did last year for this year. To, again, it's operational versus capital, and we, we, we're kicking the can down the road on capital all the time and trying to fund it through operational needs.
Thank you.
And we've also got, you know, two point, two million dollars of unfunded things here.
Right.
And, and you're talking about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars right there with the capital, which, which will solve the problem.
Well, five hundred and seventy-five, what Brent is proposing.
And I understand on the twenty-first-century classroom that some of that goes to be part of how we continue to work with our classrooms and some of the things that we're doing, so, uh, but the maintenance plans, you know, we are stewards of the building and the grounds, okay? That's what we are. We're the stewards. They hand it over to us, and we're responsible for taking care of the buildings and the grounds, and we do the best job we can. But they're also a partner with us in trying to help us keep those buildings and grounds up because when we're done with them, we give it back to them and hopefully can give it back to them in a decent condition. So, you know, it, it's, they're, they're helping themselves out if they can help us keep these things from a capital standpoint going on. And in, in replacing aging buses, you know, it's part of operations. You've got to look at your buses. I, I guess, and maybe Walt had put, just, Mr. Shannon had put this in some previous presentations, but it would be interesting to know where we're at on the, our bus age and mileage. I don't know if that's...
We, we had that data last year. We certainly can resurrect the data, but, you know, to really stay ahead of the curve, I think we would need to be buying eight buses, not four and not two.
So that was my request even more.
I'm happy to do the request, you know, if the Board tells me exactly what you want me to ask for, but you probably won't have an answer in time to balance your budget.
Right.
So my, my approach, as I looked at this today, to bring you a recommendation was, find a way to balance the budget that is perhaps not palatable, but it's the most palatable that I could come up with, knowing that we can go to the supervisors, ask for additional funds from that June, from the June revenue. If we get it, great, you get to come back and restore some things to the budget. If you don't get it, then you will have made decisions that could, could be lived with within the system. I would ha, I would have a very hard time not having any roof money. I mean, it's the, and this is not nearly enough. I mean, you really need four million dollars for roofs.
Well, again, I was gonna bring up the whole cardio check.
But this is your part, this is your Band-Aid.
I mean, we, we've got a report that talks about how the fact we've got boilers, we've got components in our buildings now that if they break down, you can't find replacement parts for them.
But that's your long time, that's your long-term capital conversation that's coming up on May fourteen.
You know, long-term is hitting us right in the face right now, too.
So do we need at this point a motion to ask for possibly the extra money? That's my question. I would be glad to move that.
Are you making a motion?
Motion, yeah, so move.
So I need you to be real specific.
I know.
I move that we ask the Board of Supervisors if there is one-time money for the, I would ask for the seven hundred and fifty thousand for the replaced one-time funds for building, repair, roof, maintenance, twenty-first-century classroom improvements, and replacing four buses.
And we'll draft a letter if that's the desire of the Board.
Is, is that gonna, is that going to address this budget in time-wise?
It won't. It will not allow you to stop the process of balancing this budget in all likelihood.
So it's an irrelevant...
It's not irrelevant. It would let you...
At this point, it is.
It would let you come back and restore funds to the budget that you had cut. It wouldn't, wouldn't prevent you from having to make some tough decisions right now, but it would allow you to come back and undo them.
I, I'm, I agree with Wendell completely, except we've hurt kids over and over and over again through this budget process over the last four years. And now, and now we're at a point where, um, safety is an issue. And I think it's an important issue. We've, we've got situations that are happening every time we pick up the newspaper, whether it be the Boston Marathon or whether it be a, an elementary school in Newtown or, or whether it be a, a, a situation at our local mall. The thing that I found out in my years in education was this. The more eyes you have looking for situations, the better off you are. And we keep on taking those eyes away. We get a, we get rid of administrators, we get rid of athletic directors, we get, we're, we're looking at the nurses and we're cutting them back, and we keep on pecking away at this situation so that when the person who's going to do something comes into the building, he's not gonna be, or she's not gonna be recognized. And they can be recognized in many cases. They can be recognized by a conversation with an administrator, a nurse, a teacher, someone. Many of these situations, after the fact, people have said, you know, I remember him being kind of weird and blah, 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 blah. And if we keep on taking personnel away from the schools, then that's gonna affect our ability to keep the schools relatively safe. And I just think that for us to keep cutting positions and keep cutting administrative positions and nurses and custo, and whatever it may be, we keep cutting and cutting and cutting, it's sinful to the point where we're gonna have big problems.
And I agree with you. That's the reason why I wanna go back to the Board of Supervisors and ask for the money so that we can restore assistant principals and A.D.s and, and do some things that have more eyes. We're not able to do that because we're funding capital.
Yes, and that's why I say I agree with you, except we need those eyes and we need them. We can't take anymore away.
I, I may have, this may not be the correct time to bring this up, but, and, and help me understand when we were throwing around figures in the beginning and, and what we had brought up. Did we discuss the savings of the gas cost from having to transport Blacksburg to Christiansburg? Because I know when we did that, there was a cost affiliated.
There is. It's going into the move. It's gonna cost about a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, so it's just...
It's budgeted money, but it's gonna go in the move to bring BMS back to Blacksburg.
Gotcha, okay. I'd like to...
So we still have a motion on table, but no second? And I can't second.
So I guess with this amount of time, you can say it's dead. Um, so I've got a question. So with, um, sequestration, when will we know about those funds?
I really can't even begin to speculate on that, you know? It was supposed to be January, then it was supposed to be March, and now they're saying, you know, June. Um, you don't know.
But...
It's, it's not, in my opinion, it's not safe to not budget it if you don't wanna take the services away from kids.
And, and I, I believe that is a good way to, that we need to approach that, but it's already come down two and a half percent.
Two point two.
Right. So my concern with, especially hearing some of the discussion last night with our supervisors, is going back and asking for more money that we need, you know, for the capital. I absolutely agree with you guys. But we have, I don't know that they would be so willing at this point to say, okay, we'll give you the money, before they've had time, before they've even started looking at what kind of money they're going to have, you know? I've got some...
They're gonna have one month of two cents. So, Mr. Shannon, would, can you tell me how much money that is? Sometimes I can't talk and do math at the same time.
It's all right. I mean, we should be asking for it.
Last year was, you know, quite a bit of money, but it was twelve cents for one month.
Well, based on the previous budget, uh, one per, one cent increase in the real estate tax generally, uh, uh, increased seven hundred thousand dollars.
For a year.
So you're only talking for half a year on this, which would then would generate three hundred and fifty thousand, so the total would probably not exceed seven hundred thousand, uh, ba, based on the, um, on that increase.
Okay.
Your increase last year was, uh, based on a twelve-cent in, in increase, and so it would be a much, much lower number. Your, and your question on sequestration and when you get into the federal, uh, if you recall, the federal government's budget begins one September and runs, uh, or starts one October and runs through September thirtieth. Normally, it's in August and September when we receive the final allocations as to what our budget allocations are going to be under the new grants, and these are mostly titles. Your Title I, Title VI, which is Special Ed, Title III, English Language Learners, most of those titles. We usually receive an indication about this time of year to fill out a grant application, but we don't know what, um, that final amount's gonna be. And the state really can't tell us at this time because they have not received uh, what their amount's going to be for the upcoming budget years, so...
But they are getting, they're constantly in contact with, you know, the, uh, feds and the gentleman who is the Director of Special Education for the Department of Education, Virginia, is the one who gave us this number based on the conversations with the feds feeling fairly confident that it would go down from an eight-point-two percent reduction to a five percent reduction. And the conversations in which I've been involved, they're pretty sure that the five percent's gonna go through. And if you watch some of the little things that are happening, you know, some things are happening, like capital tours, uh, like the Blue Angels flights are being canceled, and it is a result of the impact of sequestration. So this is the best available current information.
And when it change, when it changes, as we've done every year, we address it through supplemental appropriation requests, either up or down, once we know the better numbers.
Do we have a fill for our own budget and if there is any carryover money at all? I know last year, we didn't, I, the Board did not hear that information until like June, but...
At this time, our projections are no carryover. Actually, we're having to still look for money, so at this time, there's no carryover.
The expenditures are ahead of last year right at the moment. If you look at that balance sheet.
The carryover you will, uh, we will be addressing either one way or the other is the four hundred thousand, which has been appropriated for capital, uh, money is in our budget now through a supplemental appropriation. We will not be able to spend all that by June thirtieth because a lot of the work happens during the summertime, so there'll be, but that's a separate pot of money that we'll be addressing. But from this year's operating budget at this time, that'd be very little, if any.
But also, as the feds work through their budget issues, programs can be re, restored. So just because programs are being cut and things are being cut, that doesn't mean it's gonna stay that way permanently, even through the end of the year. I also have a concern with the Affordable Healthcare Act and our part-time employees and what exactly that's going to look like. You know, even with two hundred, what was it, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, it still could look very different because we have no idea how that is going to finally end up affecting us.
Well, Anthem has been working on it, and you're not required to provide the exact same plan for part-time employees that you do for our regular employees. If we had to provide the same plan for the thirty-hour people, it's gonna cost you eight thousand dollars a person. So this is really there as a, um, safety cushion for us to be able to afford a modified plan for our part-time folks. And I wouldn't recommend reducing it at this point?
No, I'm not saying, I'm not saying reduce it. I'm just saying there, there are other factors in here that what little bit of money we might be able to get, extra money from the supervisors, from their, um, surplus, we may need it just to cover things that we have to cover. Because this, it's, you know, it's not even gonna be enough for what the request that we would need, the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Again, that's the reason why I was requesting that we go back about the capital.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm talking about.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. It's, we may need to ask for those funds just to cover these two items that I've talked about because we won't have the funding.
So we should ask now?
I'd, I'd like to, uh...
But what you're saying is we might not spend that money on capital. We'd have to spend it on other things like insurance or something.
Right.
Yeah.
I'd like to reintroduce that motion that we, um, send a letter to the supervisors indicating that the, I believe it's five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, be put into a capital account. How am I gonna word this? Does that make, is that okay? And I'd, I'd like to expedite that as rapidly as possible. And I'd also like them to know that we're working as hard as we can to, to get this budget in line with the figures they've given us, but it's close to impossible. There is, there, as you say, there may be some more money coming. If we can do something with that five seventy-five, that may help tremendously, I don't know. Anyway, I put a motion on the floor.
And now need a second.
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we now have a second and open it up for discussion.
Were your thoughts to do that instead of the seven fifty because we're thinking that they only have seven hundred?
I'm using Ms. Blackburn's figure, five seventy-five, which is minus two buses.
So what is the difference between your motion and mine, Joe?
The seven fifty...
Yours was seven fifty, mine was five seventy-five.
It's the amount of money he's asking for.
The amount of money is different.
For the superintendent's recommendation, to match the superintendent's recommendation.
And to move it as quickly as possible to see if we can, um... have it affect this, this budget.
Joe's talked about things, Penny's talked about things, that we may have to look at putting back in here. And I think that's one of the reasons we should at least ask. I mean, they can say no.
But that motion was for capital?
And it would be to, to.
Right.
To put toward capital, but we also have the flexibility.
No, not if we ask for it for capital, and I'm not gonna be caught in that mess again.
And in the motion, do we want, we want to say that it's specifically for these three items?
I mean, when we go across requesting it, it would be for these three items? In the letter.
With the funds that, uh, were approved last night, was it one point four? Are you including that, that they are for that capital into our operating budget? Help me with that part.
Are you talking about the five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars?
The one thirty-seven?
The one thirty-seven is in, is in here.
Right, no, I'm talking about, was it the two percent increase? That was gonna generate the one point four for capital to try to build the bank?
I have not touched that, to Penny, that's off the, that's off the table.
Okay.
But have you included the one thirty-seven?
I have included the one thirty-seven as additional revenue.
Ms. Franklin, specifically, my motion is for those three items right there, just for clarification.
Yeah, I knew.
I misspoke about. But I wouldn't want to. But doing that frees up money in the operational side that allows us to cover that. Even though if we go across the hall and ask for these three items and, and say we're gonna specifically do it for capital, it does free up some money that we could address some of the things that has been discussed here and concerns people have. So it does give us some, some more flexibility to deal with some things.
And one of those, as Mr. Ivors pointed out, is the needs for security, you know?
Absolutely.
Well, there was some conversation, Ms. Franklin and I heard last evening among the Board of Supervisors, and the supervisors and the county manager are aware that we have been engaged with the three municipalities, uh, with the county sheriff's office, with the Town of Blacksburg Police, and the Town of Christiansburg Police doing security audits. And they are aware of a couple of the top recommendations that are coming out of the audits that I've looked at already. Carol Edmonds mentioned it to them last evening. They have a capital maintenance reserve of three point four million dollars. And my recommendation to the board would be, as soon as I can give you what I consider the top two or three recommendations from that, the safety audits, that we make a request to the supervisors for security improvements to come from perhaps that capital reserve, because it is for those kinds of things. The other thing that's out there that's on the burner is that we have the opportunity to apply for, uh, a hundred thousand dollars with a twenty-five thousand dollar match from the state for security improvements. But the state has not released those grants yet, so we don't, we can't apply for them until they release them. So there are, there are some other places that we could approach the supervisors regarding the need to do some enhancements with safety and security in our schools.
I think, I think we need to be careful with, I, I don't want our schools to, to end up looking like fortresses. If, if there's gonna be security, I think it's gotta be internal, and it's gotta be, people have gotta be vigilant, and they've gotta be trained properly and so on. I'm not so sure that, um, um, more armed police officers in buildings is, is the answer I want our kids to identify with as they go through school. I don't know where the cost is coming from that, but, um, my, my feeling is if we hire, if anybody hires people from capital or anywhere else to go into our buildings, then is that gonna take money away from, as I said before, more personnel from the school side who know the kids, who are trained to, like nurses, counselors, trained to recognize different situations? Is it gonna take away from those positions?
It doesn't necessarily mean personnel to make the buildings more secure.
Okay.
There are other systems that we can put into the buildings, practices that we put into the buildings, but take funding to happen. You know, modifications that may need to happen at some of the buildings, uh, as Ms. Blacksburn, Blackburn has been passing along with, uh, information from her, uh, meetings with the law enforcement. So my feel is not necessarily personnel.
Okay.
I agree.
Shall we vote on that motion, though?
That's what I was getting ready to do. I was gonna ask if there's any more discussion on it. Hearing no more discussion, we have a motion on the table. All those in favor of Mr. Ivors' vote to request the five hundred and seventy-five from the Board of Supervisors for capital? All those in favor signify by staying aye, aye. Any opposed?
No.
Any opposed? We have one opposed. You got it? Did you say you?
He asked me if I said no, I said no, wasn't he?
Just double check. You got clarification on that?
I do, I will prepare the letter.
Thank you very much. Any other further discussion on the budget update? Facilities update.
Next item is the monthly facilities update. I'd ask Mr. Beranato if he would come to the podium. As he's walking, I would just ask the board if there are any specific pieces of information that you need for the evening of the twenty-fifth. If you would give me a heads up so I can have the data available for you, I'd appreciate it. Dan?
Good evening. Going over some of the things we've seen before that were in process. We did complete the mobile unit, uh, moved from Old Prices Fork to Auburn Middle School to replace a deteriorated one there. And we're in process, uh, we've taken the one away from Kips, cleaned that area up, and moved it to Falling Branch, but we'll probably not be able to, uh, totally open that until, uh, this summer. Roof replacements, we have two for the summer, uh, and we got some bids last week, and we're in the process of analyzing those for responsiveness and responsibility and reasonable price. Our summer moves, uh, that's the big thing that all, all of your support departments are, uh, working on right now. Facilities Department, technology, warehouse, purchasing, and also food services. And we're meeting every two weeks and developing our detailed plans on that. And VDOT contacted us last week, uh, for a job they wanna do at Bellevue to improve, uh, guard rail there. And you'll see that go in probably within the next two months. They're coordinating closely with the school and the principal to make sure, uh, when they do that, that bus operations and school operations and S O L tests are not impacted.
Before you move on, replacement of roofs, is that a ongoing cycle that we just follow? Or is that through inspection and evaluation of the roofs?
Right. A couple years ago, we had, uh, total system roof analysis, and we had, they had recommended a number of repairs and roof replacements for a five-year plan. And we did the first year of that, and in this year, they were recommending these two roofs be replaced. And, uh, that was approved last year and funded, and, uh, that's what we're in the process, and we'll do that this summer.
So it's not cyclic, it's something that we really need?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
I'd like to know about the VDOT guard rail at Bellevue. Is that gonna go all the way across the front of the school, or?
No, there's an existing guard rail, uh, where the bus loop exits the school. And right now, it comes, uh, it's on one fourteen, and it comes sort of into that exit. And it's going to be, then there's a wood post fence. The wood post fence will be taken away and the guard rail extended down into the campus to make it overall much stronger. Because it's curved, it needs, they've determined it needs a longer length to be effective and as strong as it can. A modern standard, it's an old guard rail, and they're bringing it up to their modern standard.
Oh, okay. To keep cars from coming out on the campus, basically?
Well, guard rails deflect cars from going off the road, also.
Oh, okay, okay, I know.
We also look at, uh, P T A and booster projects, and the first case here, Town of Blacksburg pro- project at, uh, Kips Fields, the restroom they're doing. And, uh, you could see this picture was taken last week, it's just about complete. They were testing and balancing, uh, the building, and expect it to open in a couple weeks.
Thank goodness, that's a much-needed improvement out there over what they had.
It's a sweet little building as well. It's, it's well done.
Very well done.
We are working with, uh, Prices Fork, uh, they put in to, uh, develop, uh, a raised garden planner there. They're working with Home Depot as helping them with that. And, uh, I would mention that we had a lot of help at a number of schools during the big event with Virginia Tech. And, uh, at Prices Fork, I think it was Valley Landscaping, that, uh, really stepped up and, and helped at Prices Fork. So, uh, another good little project.
And the B H S is also doing storage buildings, what are those?
They're beginning to talk about that.
Okay.
Those are at the multipurpose fields at the new school. They were in the approved conditional use permit as future buildings, and, uh, the booster clubs are starting to, uh, think about, uh, building those.
I missed that, building what?
I'm sorry?
I missed building what?
Uh, storage building, storage building, out near the practice fields, multipurpose fields. Uh, I think it was in February, we started reporting at your request on the status of the former schools' properties. I'll go through it quickly, uh, the old Blacksburg Middle School, uh, town received a rezoning proposal, and there's a public meeting coming up next Monday, I believe, the twenty-second.
This information was provided directly by the county manager to us on the current status of the projects, properties.
Ellison Lafayette, uh, Elementary, of course, those buildings have been demolished. The property is now going to be auctioned, and that date has not been set yet, uh, but that's in the process of being set. So you can look for that to be auctioned.
Do you know why mo- they moved to auctioning?
I don't.
For the sale, any?
The property has been, uh, has had signage on it for sale for some time, and although they've had a couple of folks take a look at it, there hasn't really been any real interest, and so the feeling appeared to be that they might move the property more quickly if they were to put it up for auction.
How big is that property?
It's approximately eight acres, I think. Prices Fork Elementary School, uh, supervisors put out a request for proposals for prospective purchasers for that in February. Those proposals are due at the end of this month, and they'll take a look at those and go from there. Former Blacksburg High School, as you know, the town has expressed an interest in that, but no negotiations have occurred yet. Shaw's Elementary School, uh, property is available for, for marketing for sale. We are doing some temporary storage in there of ex- existing furniture, but we've told them, if you remember, we surplus the building and said we could be out of there if they're, they have a buyer within, I think it's ninety days. And finally, Two Hundred Junkin Street, our favorite old school board office. That is in the process of having the title transferred, uh, from the school board to the Board of Supervisors. We're working with the county attorney on that. You already surplus that building, I think, at the last meeting. And that's it.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. And we have next our capital projects update, and I believe Curtis is back with us this evening. Welcome, Curtis.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I know it's been a couple months since we give an update, um, and there's been a lot of progress since then, and so I was gonna show you some photos. I'll start with Auburn High School. Photo on the left is the new entrance to Auburn High School. You can see the canopy structure, a lot of the brick columns, the metal roofing there. Uh, on the right is another photo, another perspective from the southwest side, from the road going up to Auburn Elementary School. Uh, you can see the classroom wing on the right, entrance will be in the middle, the, uh, gyms are on the left side of the picture there. Uh, another view of, uh, Auburn High School from Auburn Elementary, uh, view towards the entrance. And then we're moving to the inside of the building. On the right is the, uh, main gymnasium at Auburn High School. You can see the two light monitors and the roof, uh, paints on the walls, the, the, uh, goals are up. So there's a lot of progress in the gym. Uh, on the left is the, uh, media center and some of the high base space there. You can see they're protecting some of the columns because they're painting in that area. And then on your right is one of the science labs, and you can see the science casework going in in those areas as well. Blacksburg High School, uh, some views of the exterior on your left is, uh, looking, uh, from the southwest towards the classroom wing. Uh, the entrance would be to the left of that, that end of the building. See some of the glazed block and the brickwork there, all the windows are in pretty much, except for a couple. On the, the other picture is the other end of the classroom wing, you can see barely that the, uh, greenhouse is being constructed at this time. Uh, this is a view of the, uh, media center and the entrance to the building. You can see the new site wall in the front, uh, classroom building will be on your right there as you're looking towards the entrance, with the administration on your left. And then this is a picture of Blacksburg High School's gym. Uh, you see the partition in the middle that splits the gyms in here. Of course, there's paint on the walls, and, uh, a lot of, uh, progress in the gym areas. This is, uh, on your left is the auditorium, uh, view looking at the stage area. Speakers have been installed and lights fixtures have been installed. You see the acoustical ceilings, I think they call those floating ceilings or clouds. And you can, uh, on your right is a, a science lab in Blacksburg High School with some of the casework that's, uh, installed there. I'm kinda surprised, it's kind of like a small college campus, at both schools.
Now you say that, and everyone's gonna be saying, we built a college.
Montgomery County is, uh, in the process of procuring F F and E, they're ahead of the ballgame there. Some purchase orders have been issued and some are in process. Tennis courts at Auburn High School were turned over last month, so they are using those facilities just as they are the softball field. We got the building permit for Auburn Middle School last week, uh, and so we are starting the planning for construction to start on Auburn Middle School, uh, this summer, once students move out of the, uh, existing high school. Uh, we're still on target for, uh, to meet our dates, that's in the contract for substantial completion, which is good news. A couple other things, uh, you should be aware of is we are starting work on, or branches starting work on Route Eight to widen the road and make improvements there, which means that, that, uh, there'll be some traffic concerns for the folks coming from Floyd and that area and, and back home, so, uh, you will see that over the next month or two. And, uh, also understand there might be a tour coming up in the next few weeks.
Yes, uh, Millie, out of Dan Beranato's office, will be contacting you with, uh, dates. The last week in April and the first week in May, we'll be doing tours at, I think it's five P M. We're doing them for you all, and also have extended the same invitation to the Board of Supervisors.
With that, I'll take any questions.
Thanks for being on, and much time, I mean, the time, scheduling is true, that's true.
A lot of people saying, is it really true, it's not gonna be opened on time, are those rumors true? That's what.
Thank you.
We get, yeah, we get, we analyze schedules every other week, it seems like, so we're on target.
And the weather's been fairly helpful, right?
Yes, and we're hoping that it, sun comes out and it drives the sites and we get some of the site work done, so we're crossing our fingers.
Thank you.
Now, when you say a tour, I've got a lot of parents who've been asking if they can go and see the building.
No, I'll leave that to Ms. Blackburn.
It's not, it's not time for that, Joe, okay? We, we have a very aggressive construction schedule to meet. So, Mr. Kits and Mr. Polly have been taking, uh, department T- So Mr. Kits and Mr. Polly have been taking department teacher groups in, and they've also been taking selective parent advisory committee groups who would go with them. But to do general tours for the public, we're not there.
That's what, pretty much.
We are doing, we are doing the parent advisory.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Yes, thank you.
When do we start talking about a celebration of the opening of these new high schools?
We usually don't do a dedication until after the school is in use. And my recommendation will be that we maintain that. But of course, that's a board decision, because you're going to be right up to the wire walking these kids and these textbooks and these teachers and everybody into the building. So if you'll recall from Prices Fork, from East Montgomery, we do them after the folks are in the building and settled. But that certainly is something that I'm happy to have a discussion with you all about.
Definitely seems like something to celebrate at some point.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, I definitely think we will.
There will, better be. It has been in the past.
Yeah, but the schools do that when they're ready for us.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. I mean, to, you know, have a grand opening, I'm not sure we're going to, you know, be ready to do that on the first day of school. We might have a lot of other things on our mind that day.
Next item on the agenda is unfinished business, and unfinished business is the school board retreat. And I think the only thing that we.
What's the date of this?
We discussed the Saturday retreat, and we discussed the time from 8:00 to 2:00. Have we put a date out there yet?
Oh, good, not a lot.
I don't think we've actually come up with some sort of a targeted date yet in which we want to have our retreat. So I think it would be, if you have your calendars handy, now would be a good time to discuss when we would like to do this. I would suggest, just throwing out a month, I'm going to throw the month of June out there, since that school will be finished out.
Superintendent gave us a recommended month, I can't remember what it was, but it sounded more like July.
Was it July?
I think it probably was.
That's fine.
Hoping that we could maybe have the BMS people primarily over in Blacksburg by then, and that would be one of the major moves, kind of off our plate.
I think I can do that.
Um, let's look at the calendars, if you've got them with you.
So let's go.
We're going to July?
July.
I just suggest we enjoy and avoid the Fourth of July.
You think?
Yes, that weekend.
So.
I'm happy with the 13th, the 20th, or the 20th. I'm not real happy with the 27th. I like the 13th or the 20th.
20th would work better for me.
Which one?
The 20th.
Also. 20th?
At this point, both are okay.
No.
What?
20th won't work for me, I'll be on vacation. I'm starting my vacation on that day.
On the 20th?
Yes, ma'am, that's the plan.
I would really like to suggest this doodle poll thing. If somebody can't do the figuring it out, I'll get on the phone with you and help you figure it out, to come up with dates or something like this.
Yeah, doodle is great.
Does anyone have a?
So you're talking 13th?
I don't know why we can't figure it out now, but that's okay.
I don't have my summer plans all figured out, but I'd be glad to, you know, let you all figure out the Saturday, and I can fill it in later.
What was the matter with the 13th?
Doesn't work for me, and it's rare that I ever have a date that doesn't work, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's April?
What about, like, even, I know we were talking about July, but I wonder if we went latter in June, because it's got five weeks in it.
The 29th would not.
Like the 29th.
29th wouldn't work for me or the 1st, the 1st or the 29th would work.
Okay, so it's April?
Or the 22nd wouldn't be.
If we gave it till the middle of May, so folks might be able to see more about their planning in our second meeting in May.
But is June 15th a possibility for people? Any negatives on 15th?
I think the superintendent was saying the month of June was going to be busy getting things pushed to get into the buildings.
Right, but July's.
You know, I'm happy to do the 15th, you know, the other, if that works for everybody at the table at the moment, I'm happy to do the 15th.
You sure?
But the concern I have is, I don't really have a lot of feedback from you all about what you want to talk about. And I don't want to just talk to you.
No.
I, I would like for you all to decide what you want to talk about, so that we could actually have a conversation about the things that are important to you. And, you know, give me a half hour to talk about, you know, what I have on my radar for the next year. But, you know, it would appear, as I've watched and heard the discussion here, that there's some things you all would just like to talk about, rather than me have people talk at you.
Well, I thought Wendell's suggestion of looking at last year's retreat and looking at some of those issues that we were involved with then and carrying on, what do you think, Wendell? Is that what you were thinking?
Well, I, I think I put several things out there, that's what I'm looking at right now. But, um, one was virtual learning, one is safety. I think I indicated in the email that I think that we need to look at our current state of where our schools are at from a safety standpoint, and that we need to create a vision of what we consider to be safe schools three, five, 10 years down the road, and, and the issues that we're going to face and start addressing and planning out. I think the same thing is true for the virtual learning, online learning. I know that one of the things, and Joe touched on this tonight, but at the conference, we had a, the technology track at the national conference had a lot of topics talking about moving from textbooks to ebooks. And textbooks, how much they had saved, the, the cost related to it. So, you know, it may be worthy of trying to tie virtual learning and ebooks. And again, there was a lot of stuff in the technology track that talked about issuing iPads. I mean, we were, I was seeing numbers of some school divisions issuing 4,000 iPads, 3,500 Chromebooks, different things of that nature that are occurring out there. So, you know, I think if we, while we are equipping our classrooms with the infrastructure technology, we're at some point in time going to have to start talking about how we're going to equip the students with the technology. I'll, I don't want to belabor this, I did go to, I think Joe was there as well, on Bring Your Own Device. Fairfax has invested heavily in Bring Your Own Device, and seems to have a very good handle on that. It'll be worth pursuing there. So those are my topics. You know, I, I think that, I can't find it here in front of me right now, but I'll dig it out. But I'm open to others, but I wanted to start the discussion with the, based on my experience and based on what we see out there. We're strategic, we're vision, we're mission, we need to use this school board retreat to have this kind of discussion.
My plan of the Bring Your Own Device was Prince William County, which, we have to go across the country to find out what Prince William County is doing, and they're doing a great job. So my plan is to go up there and visit, and I've talked to the presenter, and they were very happy to have me come up there, so. But again, I think Ms. Blackburn is correct. To get something accomplished between now and the middle of June would be very difficult.
Yeah.
For a retreat, as much as I would love to hear her speak to me, it should be give and take, not just her speaking.
For, for me to set a date tonight, I wouldn't, you know, I just couldn't do that. I'm kind of like Sarah, some of my plans, in two weeks, I'm going to have a better idea about some things.
I want to bring it up, and maybe serve its idea about the doodle, whatever it is.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, let's do a doodle.
I think it's, you know, there's nothing wrong with trying it, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work.
There is a legal concern with our doodle that needs to be investigated. If the voters are voting, there's a legal concern with this, even on a date.
What did she say?
Doodles is not a good idea.
Okay.
Yeah, we wouldn't. We wouldn't want to be doing any voting. To me, it's more of just providing information to one source, but not really discussing it, because that's also worth discussing as well. So, but, but thank you for reminding us, that's a very good point, I appreciate that. But again, if we want to wait two weeks, I just, look at your calendars, start thinking about it, thinking of topics as well. I've wrote my topics out, and I want to keep the discussion going.
And I'd like to throw out the topic, you know, from last year's board, working together, board interaction.
Evaluation.
Yeah, evaluation, yeah.
Any other items of unfinished business by school board members? New business by school board members? Any items of new business? Oh, the sheriff's SRO request. Today you have received an email from the, Ms. Blackburn saying that the sheriff has asked that we put the dare officer in the county schools.
One day a week.
One day a week, and I guess that would be alternating from school to school one day a week. And I certainly don't have an issue with it, other than, you know, it's just the county schools. It is not all of the schools in the town of Christiansburg or the town of Blacksburg. And they do have officers and dare officers there, but I just want the board to be aware that it wouldn't be like a full coverage for all elementary schools in Blacks, in all of the county.
Are the towns' officers doing it in, in the towns at this point?
All of the law enforcement agencies have picked up their presence in our schools. So it's not unusual to have officers walking through Blacksburg schools, Christiansburg schools, or the county schools. But their only, the only assigned officer to an elementary school at this point is Falling Branch Elementary School. And then to, not today, but I think it was yesterday, I got the request from the sheriff's office that they take a current SRO, I mean, a current SRO-trained officer who's been doing dare at the elementary schools, and assign that person for the remainder of the year on a rotational basis to the elementary schools in the sheriff's jurisdiction. That would be Auburn Elementary, Prices Fork Elementary, Eastern Montgomery Elementary, and Prices.
Bellevue.
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 Name the same one twice, so, and Bellevue. So that's the request before you today. I do know from my chief's meeting last week that the federal grants for SROs, for increased SROs in municipalities is out. It has a due date of May 4th. At least two of our law enforcement jurisdictions have indicated that they are interested in writing a grant, although they're a little concerned about the competitiveness of the grant in the big scheme of things from the federal standpoint. And so if, if they do, on your May 7th agenda, you'll have a copy of that grant, because you need, you would need to agree to accept the officer if they got funded. So that also is probably a little part of what's going on with putting an officer a little bit more in a school to see how it works on a short-term basis with the elementaries.
And would an SRO be there throughout the day then, all day in one school?
One day per day in each of four schools, is what the sheriff is.
I understand that.
One day per week.
But that's for the county, but then if they got this grant.
Not necessarily.
It would still be maybe moving around school to school.
They would design what their service model would look like. The grant would design what the service model is at the school.
I was curious about how helpful it is. I wanted to know the helpfulness of having an officer in a school to save one day a week, rather than having someone there all the time. I was just curious to know.
For me, just some common sense would be, as Joe kind of alluded or spoke to, you have another set of eyes there in the building that are trained to look for, you know, things that we might need to tighten up on, help folks understand things that they may need to look for. And I would hope that it would not be a scheduled rotation, so that folks would know when they might be in the building. I appreciate the fact that the sheriff came to us and asked us before someone just said, "We're going to do this, what do you all think?", you know?
Well, again, I wanted to make, we're all in agreement, we want to do that. I just want to make sure that those of us that, that were asked about full coverage, it is not happening. But the, the police presence is definitely there, and I do see it when I drive by the schools. Any other items of new business by school board members? Next item is announcements and information, any announcements and information?
I'd just like to have a moment of silence, or at least all of us being together on the special day of today for tech and New River Community College, community, and Boston community. Students are very much involved, and just the thought from us to the, to them. And then I do want to thank the Board of Supervisors for really stepping up for our educational program since the state is being so non-stepping up, shall I say, at this point. And then I really want to thank all of the special ed teachers who've helped our students with the Virginia Alternative Assessment Program exams. There's a lot of work, from what I understand. Teachers spent many, many hours working with students to complete these tests. And so deepest thanks to all who spent so much time caring and making a difference with our VAAAP testing program. Really appreciate it.
And I would like to thank the gifted advisory committee for their great work last week. They had two open houses, and I went to the open house, I think Sarah was there as well. That was definitely a, it was eye-opening, but they're doing a lot of great things, they really are.
Excellent, they're doing a lot with very little.
Yeah, they definitely are, definitely doing that.
And then I also want to say Blacksburg Middle School, they had a great drama production. It was really super, and I'm sorry that I'm just going to have to miss a lot of other schools' programs, but it's great what we're doing in our school system, I'm really proud of us.
Board members, you see the agenda preparation for the next meeting? We'll be back here next week on Thursday, the 25th, I believe that's the correct date. Seven o'clock for a budget workshop. And then closely after that, on Monday, April the 20th, uh, April, Monday, April the 29th, we will have our public hearing. And with that, I ask for motion for adjournment.
So moved, sir.
Okay. Always in favor, six to five, stay in.
Ah.
We're adjourned, thank you, motion carries.